Okay, Michelle, if you say so. I know. Yes, it does.
Okay, so we're broadcasting and we're just gonna wait a little bit. We don't have any attendees coming in yet. So hopefully, there's some coming. Can you see the participant box, John?
I see the, at the bottom, I see four participants right now. At least one person must have just joined us.
We have someone joining us, so that's good. We're just giving it a few more seconds to let folks join us this morning.
And that person is actually my intern, so the new intern, Michelle Kailia.
Hi, Kailia. You can't talk back to us, but hi. I've met her before. We met John one time, so.
Good, and I think part of her plan is to do an informational interview with you to learn more of what you're doing and also to learn about the accountability reports and Bill Track 50 and things like that. Well, my goodness, this might be a short meeting. I don't know. You think we should wait? Obviously, we should wait.
Yeah, you know, it's Saturday morning. People are getting their coffee. My husband's still sleeping.
You know, it's funny when you talk to folks and the topic of sleeping in comes up. And I think there are still people that will sleep until nine o'clock or something like that.
Oh, man, you know.
Well, I mean, for me, sleeping in is 6:30 a.m., 7:00 a.m. I don't know. That's.
I'm an early riser. I get up early. I've always gotten up early as a swimmer, but I can sleep in if I want to. Like, I only get up 5:00, 5:30, but if I have a day where I'm gonna sleep in, I can sleep until 8:00, 8:30, maybe 9:00. You guys are making me look bad. But my husband, he can really sleep too. You know, it's funny, he's a teacher, so he's just now kinda got, I mean, here in the last month or so, gotten back to work and he said to me, this was, I don't know, the day before school really started. Because I think I'm setting my alarm for the first time in six months, I thought. Don't say that to me.
Well, and my husband just retired May the 1st, and previous to that, I got up with him every morning at 5:30 a.m. and sent him out the door by 6:06. So, and then my day began personally. So I've been an early morning guy for years and years. I generally love it, but boy, I will take advantage of sleeping in anytime I can.
Yeah, yeah. And then in the wintertime, for me, it's harder to get up in the morning because it's darker and it's typically colder. So I like when the long days, we have the long days in the summertime and you can leave the windows open and everything else. Although with all the smoke, it's been really hard.
Yeah, it has been. It's been nice here the last few days. Even though it's been so cold, I haven't been able to keep the windows open. But I'm thinking maybe tonight might be warm enough to keep the windows open, right? But it was so smoky there for a while. I couldn't, I'd wake up with a sore throat and my head hurt. I just couldn't keep the windows open. How are we looking for the fire?
Well, you know, the snow and the precipitation has helped a lot. I think the terminology is the fire has been parked. But, and basically, you know, one of the challenges has been that because of the wet nature of the snow, it's caused power lines and trees to topple, and that's made it harder to access. I think they're still assessing, although we've gotten a bit of an update, which I don't think is totally public yet, but there has been property damage.
We have a participant on the line now.
Okay, but there has, I mean, I think it's a big plus with the snow and the rain. I mean, they're still clocking it at 102,000 acres, 4% containment, and they're anticipating that, you know, minimal activity, they're smoldering. You know, they're putting in containment lines, they're putting out some of the areas, but that ultimately, you know, in the next few days, depending on how hot it gets and how dry it gets, they're assuming it'll, you know, fire activity will resume.
John, we do have some people waiting, so maybe now's the time to get going.
Yeah. Thank you, Michelle.
Of course.
Are we good?
We are good. Go ahead.
Okeydoke. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the September 12th Community Conversation for folks living in Fort Collins and La Porte. Of course, everyone is welcome. My name is John Kafalas, Laramo County Commissioner, District 1, and this is part of our, you know, monthly efforts to stay connected with people and to be as transparent and accountable as we can be. Today, I'm really happy and honored to be joined by our Laramo County Clerk and Recorder, Angela Myers, and she can, she'll be speaking very soon, giving an update on the, how we're preparing for the election. And of course, Michelle Byrd, our Public Affairs Director, and she will give us an overview of the Zoom webinar protocols. It looks like we have a small turnout today, and I hope that's okay with folks, but the plan of action is that as soon as I get done talking and Michelle explains a few things, we'll turn it over to our Clerk and Recorder, who will provide us with a very important and timely update about what's happening with the upcoming elections, and then opportunity for folks to ask questions. And then once she's done, I'm available to answer any other questions about other topics that folks are interested in. With that said, Michelle, would you tell us what we need to know about our wonderful social media platform here?
Thank you, Commissioner. Again, my name is Michelle Byrd. Good morning to you all, and thank you for joining us on this beautiful Saturday morning. If you haven't joined us in the past, you'll notice we are using a platform called Zoom Webinar, which is a little bit different than what you would normally see if you're used to attending a meeting in Zoom, maybe for work or with your family. The biggest difference you'll notice is there's no chat box for you to use. And so instead, we use the Q&amp;A box, and we use that for a couple of different reasons, and both of them are related to safety. With the Q&amp;A box, I can see what you guys ask before we make it live. This isn't to vet your questions or to change your questions. The purpose is so that if we had participants coming in, you know, of course, we keep this open to everybody. Participants coming in, able to freely send chats back and forth to other participants. We worry that someone might send a link that has some type of ransomware or a virus. If you clicked on the link, it would infect your computer, or it might take you to a website you don't wanna go to. And we wanna keep you guys safe from those things. Additionally, you'll notice that you can only see the faces of the, what we call panelists on this format. Again, same kind of safety reasons. We invite everybody to attend and participate, but we don't always know what everyone's intentions are, and we don't know what they might intend to put on their screens. So it's one of the ways we kinda protect everybody from that as well. But of course, you can still participate. Please use that Q&amp;A function to ask questions. You can type in your questions. Or if you just have comments you'd like to make, maybe you don't have a question, but you have a comment you wanna make. Just go ahead and put in that Q&amp;A section, and I'll make it live so everybody can see it. Our intent is not to hide your voice. We wanna make sure you're heard, your comments are heard. But we just wanna do it in a safe way for all of our participants. If you wanna talk to us, you can have that option too. You just need to use the raise hand feature. You'll probably see it somewhere kind of at the bottom of your screen where you typically see your chat box. Just click on that raise hand feature, and it'll let me know you wanna talk, and then I'll walk you through how to get that going. I don't see anybody called in right now, so I'm gonna skip the call-in instructions for the moment. But if I do see someone called in, I'll jump in and add those in there at the time. And that is how we participate, and Commissioner, I will hand it back to you.
Thank you very much, Michelle, and I will now hand it over to our esteemed Laramo County Clerk and Recorder, Angela Myers, who is very kind and gracious to take up some of her time on a Saturday morning. Welcome, Angela.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Michelle, for all those details. They're so much fun, aren't they? And honestly, Commissioner, I am always delighted to get the word out about election processes, so Saturday morning or not, middle of the, I don't wanna say middle of the night necessarily, but pretty much anytime I'm available and happy to have conversation. So elections right around the corner. I mean, it is within reach almost. And so I want to take every opportunity to talk with the community, any citizens who might have concern about the noise out in the world. And so I want people to be reminded, if nothing else, that they have a direct link, and that direct link is me, to the realities of our elections here in Laramo County. And that noise doesn't affect necessarily how we operate, and I wanna just answer any questions or concerns that might come up. And I'll go back to that in just a moment. The first thing I will say to everyone otherwise is that elections is getting pretty close here. Please, 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 if you are not registered, do so now. If you're, if you are 17 or know someone who is 17 and going to be 18 by Election Day, please ask them to register now. Don't wait until Election Day. That creates a lot of activity in our polling sites, and we're gonna be busy anyway, and we got COVID going on. So we really want to keep as many people from using our in-person realities as much as possible and to instead take advantage of the wonderful system we have here in Laramo County in Colorado. So I cannot imagine that the first thing on folks' mind who are participating isn't the noise out in the world and the questions associated with those things. So I'm gonna jump right in with that, Michelle. I'm assuming you will, like, raise your hand and give me a heads up if somebody's got a question that they want answered. I enjoy a dialogue, so I don't wanna just sit here and talk, but I will if nobody else does. I'm happy to do that. So, but if I need to be interrupted with someone's conversation, please do so. That's most important to me. Let's talk about the noise. So first thing I wanna say is elections are emotional events. I know that, and that's, that is as it, I don't know if it's as it should be, but it is as it is. I mean, it just is the reality. In order to get people's attention, emotions have to be activated, or the people think they have to be activated. And so there's a lot of noisy emotional stuff going on out there. Please know, inside my walls, inside my operations, that emotion doesn't exist. We leave it outside the doors, and we're here to get a job done. And we have a very, very detailed list of laws and regulations we must follow, rules we must follow. We do those without emotion. We simply are going through a checklist and getting things done. It's a very complex, a very complicated checklist. But, you know, there's a lot of noise out there. Nothing's changed in Laramo County for getting our elections done. And we've had successful mail ballot elections since 2013, I'm very proud to say, so folks should be very comfortable about how our operations will work. Please don't do anything like, oh, decide you gotta get your ballot away early because you're just concerned about mail ballot or whatever. Wait for your ballot to come to you in the mail. Don't decide you're gonna do something interesting like test the system. You decide to test the system, we take that very seriously. You do that, you're gonna get a visit from the DA. Period. And your desire to test the system will not matter to them. Our DA, I'm very grateful to say, is very serious about election fraud. That is called election fraud. The first ballot you return to us will be the one that's counted. The second one would get you a visit from the DA, so make no mistake about it. There's a lot of noise about mail balloting. Why isn't the entire nation doing it? I am here to tell you, we had a lot of opportunity to get used to the idea before we did it in Colorado. We were a permanent mail-in voting state before we became an all-mail ballot state. And permanent mail-in voting meant that folks could simply tell us one time, with no excuse, that they wanted to get their ballots in the mail. Folks did that in large numbers back then. And we had, before we went to all-mail balloting, we had more than 70% of our voters across the state, certainly in Laramo County, who already had decided to be mail-in voters. We had a lot of spooling up to becoming an all-mail ballot state to make that successful. That happened over a period of time. And, and since 2013, when we became an all-mail ballot state, which incidentally was an off-year election, make note, that was not a presidential year. It certainly wasn't a gubernatorial year either. It was one of our quieter elections when we began testing, doing that. And we have modified our processes over the years. I mean, it is not, perfection didn't come right off the bat. Although we were successful, we certainly have improved the system over time. And those improvements are very important. I will tell you, if someone told me, and I've been at this for seven years, guys, I've been clerk for seven years, I've been in the office for 17. Somebody told me a couple of months ago or today that I had to be an all-mail ballot, run an all-mail ballot election, I'd be apoplectic. And I would lose 90% of my staff. So it's not something you do like that. There are too many details. And I, there's a lot of talk about fraud out there. I think the bigger risk to something like that is administrative failure. Because there is very little chance of getting it all right if you don't have time to vet those processes before you even get started. And now you're in the throes of the whole thing, and it's really difficult to get it right. And administrative failure creates windows for fraud. So that is the bigger concern. We have an exceptional model here in Laramo County and Colorado. You, as a voter, should be extremely proud of that. You should feel extremely comfortable. This noise doesn't really apply to us here, because we've got a great system, including the postal service. That's another piece of noise we're hearing about out there. And I gotta tell you, these postal workers, I got the utmost respect for them. The postal system operates extremely well. Consider the fact that they handle billions of pieces of mail every day. And their error rate is very small, if you take that into consideration. Yes, errors happen, period. I mean, it's true. They happen everywhere. Happen with your doctor, with your IT service, and everything like that. So they do happen. But I assert to you, they happen in a very small number, especially here in Laramo County. I have extreme confidence in our voting, our US Postal System, and I'm on weekly phone calls with them. We, and this is not new. We have for years been in direct contact with them. Before we do an election, we make sure that our ballot envelopes, both directions, are prepared in such a way that they are most successful for them to run through the system. And never do we begin an election without collaboration directly with the postal service, because we are an all-mail ballot state. All states don't have that collaborative relationship built yet, and that's perhaps where more concern would be realized. But here, there shouldn't be those concerns. I am very confident that our operations will be as they've always been with respect to our mail balloting. And we have had assurances from the postal service that it's business as usual here in Colorado. Okay, can't speak for the nation, but I can certainly speak for Laramo County in Colorado. So let those worries and that noise, you know, go in one ear and out the other. I think it's more applicable to other states across the nation rather than Colorado, because we do have such a great system. Take advantage of our wonderful system here in Laramo County in Colorado with our mail balloting. We've had a lot of time to vet it. As I said, you should be comfortable with it. Don't, don't take it for granted and not pay attention to it. Use it, especially this year with our unique realities. Don't go into a voter service and polling center unless you absolutely have to. And even then, I ask that you call our office first, 970-498-7820. We will do everything we can to keep you from having to go into a voter service and polling center because of our unique realities. I am very proud to say that we, my folks in the Clerk and Recorder Office on all levels, from vehicle licensing to recording to elections administration, we have never stopped serving the public at all. We've had face-to-face contact with public the entire time through COVID. I am very proud and blessed to say that we have not had a single case of COVID reported among my staff. And we, during the June election, in which we had to employ a lot of very interesting barriers and mask operations and things like that for our election operations and our election judges, who generally are among the high-risk population. We've not had, that I know of, a single case of COVID, especially related to our activities. So I'm very blessed and grateful for that. So I think that's a testament to the operations we have in place and the things we're doing. I would, though, encourage all folks to not come in unless you have to, because that's part of what keeps us as safe as we've been. I see there might be a question. Is there a question in there, Michelle? There's something in chat. I don't know what it is.
No, Angela, I just, you gave the phone number, so I listed the phone number and sent it in the chat. So folks, if they didn't have time to write it down really quickly, they were able to access it still.
Okay, wonderful. Yes.
I have a couple of questions, Angela, and I'm sure you'll get to these, but I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about when mail-in ballots will be, you know, we'll start sending them out. What people can do if, for some reason, they don't receive it. Also, the option of, you know, dropping off one's mail-in ballot at the various ballot boxes that we currently have deployed, and additional ones that will be deployed. Could you speak a little bit to those specifics, please?
Absolutely, John. Thank you very much. Ballots are gonna go out, I always say, the week of October the 12th. However, you're hearing in the news and from other counties that they drop at the post office on October the 9th, and that is indeed the case. However, in Laramo County, for years, I have said, it's the week of, because I don't wanna create a false hope. Give some thought to the fact that every single county in Colorado is receiving their ballots at the same time. We all drop at the same time. So I wanna give our Laramo County citizens the best anticipation I can give them for when they will receive them. So they will receive, begin receiving the week of the 12th. And we, I tell people, if you don't receive your ballot by the 21st, that gives a full two weeks. If you don't get your ballot by then, call us, 970-498-7820. She's got it on the chat. And check with us about the status of that ballot, and we will get another one on its way to you. We are not able to mail anything to you eight days before election. You should never mail your ballot in within eight days of Election Day. Now, this year, you might wanna give it even a little more window. That call is yours to make. But, but we say eight days before the election, don't mail us anything, and we won't be mailing you anything. We would, after that, it's too late for us to do so by statute. So, and that this year, I believe, is the 26th of October. So when you get your ballot, please, 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 vote it right away. Get it in the mail, turn, go to that kitchen table, right, make your choices right then, and put it right back out in your mailbox. That is true convenience for you. You know, mail balloting is the great equalizer. Everybody gets mail, no matter your socioeconomic reality, and no matter anything. Any challenges you have in life, you're gonna get mail. So it is the great equalizer. Likewise, it is the great equalizer for returning that ballot. It's gonna take a single stamp. I have quoted incorrectly earlier in the year, in the season. A couple of months ago, I mentioned it would take two stamps. Unfortunately, I was wrong. I assumed it would. It's not going to, and the reason, my assumption was wrong, because we used to have security sleeves in there. We no longer do. And because I knew it was gonna be a long ballot, I kind of assumed it would take that much, and clearly, it's not going to. We've waited. So it's a single stamp. Put it back out on your box, and the postman's gonna get it right back to us. But if you procrastinate, which I do too sometimes, so I'm not blaming anybody, go to your Dropbox then. We got drop boxes all across the county. And every bit of information I'm giving you right now is included in your instructions that will be in the envelope in your, in your ballot, with your ballot, okay? On the reverse side of this, it shows you all those locations for dropping those ballots off, and when those locations are open, because they open at different times, as you can see. And that's in accordance with statute. Our 24-hour boxes, however, open immediately upon ballots being acted. So they, those ballot boxes are unlocked, as you see right now. If you tried to drop a ballot in there, you wouldn't be successful because they're locked. But once ballots are in play, we unlock them, and that is your best second option for dropping off ballots. Those boxes are under camera. They're available to you 24/7. If you're an insomniac, get right back out there and in the middle of the night and drop it off if you want to. It's under camera for your security. Never, ever, 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 please don't give your ballot to anyone else, no matter their intentions. And you, you know, no matter your challenges, you can put it right out, back out on your mailbox. If you can't do that, and somebody's offering to take your ballot, ask them to give you right to the ballot box. And the reason I say that is this. I'm not saying anybody's got bad intentions. I'm not. What I'm saying is those folks picking up your ballot, their life is happening too. And what happens to the importance of your ballot if the person who collected it from you pokes themselves in the eye? They get in a car accident. Their kids just went to detention in school, or they just found out their spouse has cancer or something. Or, you know, maybe they're not as organized as you are, and what happens if that ballot drops between their seats? We've had these things happen. And so it's important that you don't give it to anybody else. The priority of your ballot in the hands of someone else is not the same as the priority of the ballot in your hands or in our hands. So take care. Not to put a middleman in there. Do it yourself. Get it to us. There's too many great ways to do that. As well, you know, when we talk about ballot security, the security of that ballot is most at risk when it's in your hands. Never, ever give your ballot to someone else when you're, before you voted it, before you sealed it, before you signed the exterior, or after. Okay, you're the one who puts that ballot at risk when you do. Also, please don't, please don't share a selfie of your voted ballot. When you do that, you create a loss of anonymity for more people than just yourself. Those, your ballot is really a sacred place for you to have secrecy, one of the few places in this life. Don't throw it away. When you do, you also put other folks in a position of, an expectation is created for them to show their ballot. Don't do it. It's so important that you don't do it. And I think there was a question that jumped up there, and I missed it. Tell me what it is.
So I think you might be getting here to this. You seem to be on this track. But talking about how folks can track their ballot to ensure it's been received, I think you're moving in the right direction.
Absolutely. After you send your ballot in, go to votelaramo.org. I've got this wonderful logo right up here on my counter. We copyrighted that, trademarked that. It is back in 2013. We're really trying to get everyone to use that for any information regarding elections in Laramo County specifically. Never, that's the place you can go. Easy to remember, votelaramo.org. And when you go there, there's a nice little icon that says "Track Your Ballot." And that's a way to know if we received your ballot or if, if your ballot has not yet been received. And if you have concern about what you find there, call us, 970-498-7820, with any questions you might have.
Angela, we have some more questions.
Sure.
How do election workers verify signatures? And what about if a person's signature has changed from whatever is in file? So let's say I did my signature when I'm 18, and now that I'm 38, my signature looks a little bit different.
Great question. You're not 38. I know that's not true, but anyway.
I am.
Go ahead, John.
I was just trying to be funny. I'm suggesting that I'm 38, but I'll, I'll put this back on mute. Carry on, please.
I could be a comedian and say I am too, but okay. Okay, so how do we check signatures, signature verification on the exterior envelope? And I wished I'd have brought one to the Zoom meeting with me this morning, but that is one of our security practices in Colorado. It is a very important part of what makes our mail balloting so successful and something that you, as a voter, can rely on. So you are required to sign the exterior of your envelope when you send it to us. If you don't sign it, we're never gonna open it. We're gonna send you a letter. That letter's gonna say you have until eight days after Election Day to cure that ballot, or your ballot envelope is never opened, and your ballot is never counted. So first thing we do when we receive those ballots, we run them through an automated machine. That's called an Agilis in our world. And there's about five counties across the state that have these machines. It cures automatically, in the same way it cures signatures in banking, your signature on the exterior. It has, that's why you got a barcode under your signature line there. It queues up, that barcode queues up for the system, the, your signature in our voter registration system and statewide voter registration system. And so that machine compares those two signatures quickly, right like that. It cures about 50% of signatures for us right off the bat. Then the ones it can't cure, it takes a picture of that signature on the exterior of the envelope. It's taken a picture of all of them. But the picture of the ones it can't cure go out to a bank of judges who see that signature on a screen. They're working always in a bipartisan team. Everything in Laramo County elections is done in a bipartisan team. No one ever works alone. These two folks are sitting at a computer, and they see that signature from the envelope, and they see that signature from the score system, one above the other, and they compare. Interestingly enough, a quick comparison is the most accurate, because you can talk yourself in or out of anything, right? And so, and you would be surprised, the nuances of your signature that carry over. Yes, folk signatures do morph over time. There's no question about it. But we have every signature we've ever, every signature you've ever used with us is collected, and we have access to those. So if those folks off the top of it can't agree that that's your signature, then that Agilis machine calls out the ones they can't agree on. Those ballots, envelopes now themselves, go to the second bank of bipartisan team judges, who now have the envelope in their hand. They've got all those signatures for you in the system, from anytime you've worked with us, since you were 18 to 38. And they're, they can look and see, has, is this that person indeed, and yes, and they can say yes or no. And if they say no, now you're also gonna get us an eight-day letter. It's gonna say you got until eight days after Election Day to cure that, or your ballot is never gonna be counted. Your ballot envelope is in fact not even gonna be open. As we're, as we're doing our work in elections, we start, you know, a couple of weeks before Election Day, and as we do Election Day. And as we do that process, we're sending those letters out each day. So we don't wait until Election Day to send those out. However, lots of votes wait till Election Day to vote. And so, when we get those on Election Day, then you only got eight days after that, and we have to mail those. So, we also will send you a notice on email if you've provided us your email address. Very few people do that, though. We encourage you to do so. And we will send you an email if we're able, if we've got that information for you. So don't wait until Election Day to get your ballot to us.
Angela, if I may, I, I'm the one who's been posting the questions, so I want to make sure if there are some of the participants, attendees, if they have specific questions. But actually, a question that I've always had is, is this regarding signatures. And I'm, I'd appreciate you answering it, because I've always wondered. So when I first registered 100 years ago, before I was 38, I, my signature includes my middle name, John Michael Kafalas. And that's what I get back. And when I sign it, I include my middle name. But I rarely ever use my middle name, you know, when I sign a check or this or that. Can you speak to that, Angela? Should I, I need to either change my voter registration, or just have my first and last name? Or I need to be making sure that I include Michael when I'm, you know, signing on the, on the envelope there?
Great middle name, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
No, it doesn't matter. I get this question all the time. It does not matter. We are looking at the nuances of your signature. And, and so, we will, it will cure either way. So don't worry about that, folks. Ask that question all the time. What if you just signed with J. Kafalas, right? We still will do it. The letter J, you know, not the name J. But, you know, so yes, we, we're looking at the nuances of that signature, and you will still be successfully processed, too. What other questions do I have, Michelle?
Hey, John has some other questions, but that's okay. They're questions that we hear all the time, Angela. So I think they're great questions.
Absolutely.
John asked, what about voter registration? Has a voter registration increased? And what is the last day folks can register to vote? And then, after that, there's another question, but I'll let you address voter registration.
Well, I'll tell you what. Yeah, absolutely. Voter registration is up. We get, voter registration is up before every election typically. And this will be our biggest election. This will be the biggest election I've ever conducted. The presidential always is. And for that very reason, because we have more people, our, our area is growing. If we did not have an area that was growing, that would not be the case. But that just means that more people are engaged, because more people live here. Also, folks talk about turnout of elections. You know, turnout is precipitated by people having an interest in what's on the ballot, more than any other factor. It's their interest in voting on whatever the question or the candidate is. And so typically, always, presidential elections are highly voted, and have a lot more folks register and get involved and participate. So it will be our biggest election. When can you, when's the last day to register to vote? Colorado's a same-day registration state. We did that beginning in 2013, when we went to all-male balloting. That was another element of that legislation. And that's one of the main reasons why we still have voter service and polling centers, or polling places, for you to vote in person if you need to. Please don't, unless you have to, even though you hear a lot of noise in the world, okay? Please don't. In Colorado, in Larimer County, it's totally not necessary. That ballot you get in the mail is going to work just fine. But that's why we need those, because folks on Election Days, their life is happening every other day. On Election Day, there are a lot of noise, and they're like, I didn't get it done. I got to go do it. And they can. They can go in, register, and vote the same day.
Awesome. Good.
That's the next one.
The last one, or the last one from John, again, I, I ask our attendees if they have other questions. Please don't be afraid to ask them. That's what we're here for today.
Absolutely.
Why is it important to vote sooner rather than later, and not wait till the last minute?
Lots of reasons. Let's take the, let's pretend it's not a presidential election. I've been saying this for years, by the way. When I first was clerk, I had big dreams. And I was going to be the clerk who could get election night results done. Man, we can do this. There's no reason for not doing this. What is wrong with us? I mean, I can do this. And I, I had an aha moment one election early on, when I sent my folks home at 6:00 a.m. We watched the sun rise. And when I did that, I prayed that my folks would get home safe. I had just worked these people more than 24 hours straight. They are off, many of them, older folks, because those are the folks who often help us, because they're retired. They've got time. I, you know, they have already put in many hours of very detailed work. It's not difficult work, but it's exacting work. It must be done exactly so. So you've got to pay attention and have that heightened attention to detail the entire time. And then I'm sending them home in the morning, and it's November, in the snow. So I vowed that night, or that morning, that I would never do that again. And that, who cares what Clerk Myers wants? I would love election night results. Who cares what I want? It's what the voter cares about. If you care about election night results, you'll vote early, because we are an all-male ballot state. In years gone by, when you voted in a polling site, you put your ballot into a machine as you left. That machine actually counted that ballot. The counting was done. And all we did was pull a, pull a card out of that machine, and download it into our system, and we had your results. So we could do it much more quickly. Now with mail balloting, everything happens on the backend. And so we need folks, if they care about election night results, to vote early. Now, when I began saying that, I said to the press, I, you know, the other thing I didn't feel comfortable about as a clerk was this, this, every election night, I would get this phone call, Clerk Myers, what do you think? Are you going to keep going, or are you going to stop? And I didn't like the way that felt, because, you know, election results can change from the night before to the next day. And I never wanted anyone ever to think that the, that I stopped counting because I didn't like the results. And so I talked to my staff, what is our capacity on Election Day? And I said clearly to the press and to the public, if we get more than 20,000 ballots on Election Day, we will stop and continue voting the next day, period. And so, everybody knows the ground rules before we get started. And it's not an arbitrary call I make on Election Night. And, and honestly, there've been very few times we've not gotten more than 20,000 ballots on Election Day. And that is a voter's choice. If you, as a voter, care about election night results, you'll vote early. Clearly, you don't care about as much as I did, or you would be voting early. I mean, you know, it was important to me. But, and it is important. People's lives are hanging in the balance, right? So it is important. And so here's how it's going to, it's going to go. And, and, and let me back up just a minute. I got a little ahead of myself. You know, this now is a presidential election year. Our volume is going to be exponentially heavier. And we've got these interesting realities, right? And so we are, we're going to be socially distancing. We're going to be cleaning. We're going to be doing things that slow down the process if you're doing in-person voting. Again, another, and, and it's going to slow down the process for us to do our counting, because our counting facilities are, are, have barriers, and all these processes in place as well. So it's going to slow us down, making it even that much more important for you to vote early. The other thing it's going to do for you as a voter, you're going to get fewer calls. You're going to get fewer of those robo-calls. You're going to get less mail, because those folks who are doing the political outreach are checking with us regularly to see who has voted. They don't want to waste their money, or their time, on folks who've already gotten their ballot in. So get that noise out of your way early on, and vote early if you can.
Thanks, Angela. Actually, we have another question. How do we accommodate voting needs of persons with disabilities, those maybe visually impaired or blind?
Absolutely. You know, we, and every single one of our in-person voting sites, our voter service and polling centers, we have electronic equipment that allows folks to listen to the ballot. They have a touchpad for voting, making their vote count. And they get to listen back to what the ballot is, what, how their vote is going to be counted. We also have large print options for voters. If they want to request a large print ballot, we certainly can get one to them. They simply need to call us 970-498-7820. We will get them a large print ballot. We have had requests in the past for Braille. We make Braille available. However, we've never had anybody actually use the Braille. But we do make that available if it's needed. And, you know, we are very in tune with the needs of all of our voters here in Larimer County. I'm very pleased to say that every single one of our voting sites has been vetted. We have had the Department of Justice come check us out in years past, and I'm very pleased to say we had no issues of any kind to relay. We take these things very, very seriously. I will tell you, I'm a stickler. I'm a stickler, guys. And it, it, it's annoying. It's annoying to some people. My staff are known as sticklers in this state. It's annoying. We have a reputation in this state as being real sticklers, and I wear that as a badge of honor. My staff does as well. And we take these things very seriously. We are very detailed.
Thank you, Angela. I don't have any other questions right now.
You don't? Oh, my goodness. I can fill the time. John, can I have another couple minutes?
Yes, of course, Angela. And I just want to make sure that the, the vast audience that's participating, first of all, much gratitude to Sharon, Beth, and, and Kylieah. And once you're done, again, if you want to exit, you're more than welcome to. I will do my best. I, when you send out the YouTube, I'll try to get it out through Facebook and other means, because I think what you've shared with us is really, really important, and, and folks need to know about it. But once you're done, if, if people are still, might have questions for me, I'll be available, of course. Yes, please carry on.
Very good, John. And I'll try not to take up all your time, because obviously, I never shut up, right? But a couple things I want voters to remember. Top of your ballot has a stub. It's got an orange stub on the top. It says, "I voted in the November 2020 general election." Keep that as a keepsake. Pull it off of your ballot. We need you to do that, because we have to take it off as we process ballots. It's, it's on there for the purpose of checking ballots for our printer as ballots are being printed and, and put in the envelope. So it's an important thing for us to have there, but we need you to take it off before you send it in. Otherwise, our folks on the backend, it adds to our processes and takes us longer. Please remove it. Please wear it as a badge of honor. I always say, pin it on your lapel. I know it's going to be a little stripped, but isn't that even a bigger statement, that you actually did vote? And use that instead of your "I voted" sticker. Those "I voted" stickers end up in your dryer, and they ruin your clothes. And if you don't need an "I voted" sticker, if you don't need an "I voted," I mean, if you got this thing instead of your "I voted" sticker, now you don't have to have that in-person contact that's required in order to get an "I voted" sticker. You know, some counties across the state put "I voted" stickers with their ballots in the envelope. Folks, it is exorbitantly expensive for us to do that. It's not good use of your taxpayer dollars. So we came up uniquely in Larimer County with this wonderful keepsake. I got a whole stash of them on my, on my lamp there from the votes that I've cast as clerk, since we've had that. So keep that. Also, don't, please don't get your information from social media. Oh, my goodness. That is not the place to get your accurate information. We learned this last year, was it last year or the year before, that social media can cause real problems, especially in the heat of the moment, as ballots are already out there. When folks get confused in those last moments, you can inadvertently create disenfranchisement, because folks think something's happened and nothing has happened. I'm going to give you an example. We had an inference, neither last year or the year before, where a voter thought that they should have had a candidate on their ballot they didn't have. And so they posted a post that's been, and the reason they thought that is because they got a call from the candidate's committee, because those, those maps for who gets, you know, those are complicated. And those committees, they're doing the best job they can. But they sometimes get somebody that's not in their real area to vote on them. And so that's what happened in this case. The person on the phone, I don't have you on my ballot. Something's wrong with this process. And they put on Facebook that, that, check your ballot, because you may not have everybody on your ballot. And when I first heard it, first thing I did, skip a beat in my heart, right? And we checked to see, could we have been wrong? Could we have an issue? We did check. And so we want to know that. If you have a concern like that, something comes up like that, call me directly. You see my, you go to votelarimer.org. My picture's right up there in the corner. You click on that. You're going to get contact information from me directly. My cell phone is on my desk phone. I want to hear from you if you think there's an issue, okay? And in this case, we didn't have one. But by then, it had already been perpetuated, right? And, and so that can cause people not to vote. In fact, one person went to the dark side. What's the clerk trying to do? Affect our vote? She's trying to keep people from, you know, keep, mess up the election. And that makes people skeptical about the process in the system. And, and, and that's just unhealthy for anybody. I don't care what your political persuasion is. I will tell you, the candidate in this case was very gracious. I contacted them directly. They were completely on board with fixing it, fixed it immediately. But social media isn't like that. It's out there. The person who went to the dark side was contacted directly by the candidate, because they would not take my calls. They were contacted by the candidate. The candidate, they finally said, look here. And they said, oh, on the phone, as I was related to me. So it's so important. And in the moment, people get in the heat of the moment. I said, politics is emotional work, and emotional for citizens. I get that. And sometimes that can create an emotional response. My, my neighborhood, what's that? What's that social media thing that's neighborhood? I see things on there.
Next door.
Huh?
Next door is what it's called.
Yeah. Folks talk about collecting ballots for the folks in their neighborhood. Don't do that. Don't do that. You want to help folks get their ballot to us, take them to that Dropbox. Don't take their ballot from them. The, let me see. Folks always ask me about counting. Yes, we start counting early. But results are never available to us, even. We don't download what those results are until after 7:00 p.m. and all the polls are closed. We know everybody's out of those polls on Election Night. So no, people say, well, how do they know how that election's going? Well, I don't know. It's not from getting actual information. It's because probably exit polls, or something like that. And you know what? Exit polls are not always accurate, guys. People don't always tell the truth when they're put on this, on the, on the spot in person. So that's not where you're going to get your best information. Votelarimer.org on Election Night. We typically post 7:30, 9:30, 11:30. And when we get more than 20,000 ballots on Election Night, we're going to stop at that 11:30 window. That means my folks are going to get out there about 1:00. And, and we're going to start again the next day, you know, 8, 9:00 o'clock in the morning, and continue on. So that's the place to go for your information. I expect a very high turnout in the 90 percentile for this election. And that's wonderful. I love it when everyone votes. So please do, I don't care about your political persuasion, participate in the process. It's so important. It affects every aspect of your life. It is the foundation of everything we do. And when everybody votes, we get the best results we can have. So outcomes, otherwise. So I appreciate that. I think I have hit on everything I absolutely needed to hit on for you. And I so appreciate your time, John. I know I rambled on a bit, but I hope it was valuable to everyone. And don't forget, contact me personally. I take calls all the time about any concerns you got.
Angela, thank you very much. And I'm not seeing any additional questions. So we'll move on to the next part of this community conversation. And we'll post what you had to share with us, so it can get out to more folks. I wish you a good day, Angela Myers. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Well, so Sharon, Kylieah, Beth, any questions about other matters of county government? Angela Myers, of course, is one of the, I don't know how many elected officials we have, you know, the 10. Does that include the three county commissioners? So we have the three county commissioners, and of course, seven other elected officials. And while we oversee, the county commissioners oversee budgets and decide on budgets for the various areas of county government, ultimately, they, you know, they operate, and, and we try to be supportive and work together.
Hey, John, it looks like we have a question. And it's about, it's not necessarily a county question, but it's about some legislation. So the question is, what are your thoughts on Proposition 118, workers paid time off?
Well, I do have some thoughts. I haven't read the details of what the Proposition 118, you know, the details of what it states. I know conceptually what it's trying to achieve. I know that there are a lot of workers who don't have the luxury of getting paid time off if there's a person sick in the family and everything else, or other, for other reasons. But I think the nature of this, you know, this community conversation is I, I don't really, I mean, that's the extent of my thoughts at this point on Prop 118. There's a lot of information out there. I, I think nine-to-five Colorado is really champion, championing this issue. I suspect there's opposition. And I, and, and actually, along those lines, I would say too, that the Blue Book, I think people are familiar with the Blue Book. I know there's been some noise about that in the, in the, in the, in the media recently. But I think ultimately, that, that Blue Book is going to be sent out very soon, the next couple of weeks. And the, the intent there is to provide objective information about the, about the ballot measures and the pros and cons. So I really encourage folks to read that carefully. If whoever posed the question would like to speak with me offline, that would be a more a more appropriate setting. Thank you. I got out of that one pretty good, huh?
Yeah, good job. No other questions right now, so this is probably the best time to touch on the stuff that you maybe didn't get to touch on earlier, if there's anything.
Well, I, yeah, thank you, Michelle, and, and I, again, I appreciate folks participating. It, it is a little surprising that our turnout this morning is, is quite low compared to, you know, what we're, we're accustomed to, but, and that's okay. Uh, the only things I'd like to share with you at this time, uh, is that I think, and Michelle can give more details, but in the next couple of weeks, if it's not already, our bi-annual community survey, uh, will go live, and there'll be various ways for folks to respond to that, and I'll ask Michelle to provide a few more details. Also, um, kind of parallel with that effort to get input from the, from the communities, from the public, we're also going to, it's actually, it's gone, it went live yesterday. We have a new, um, a tool, uh, it's called Budget Balancing Act, and it's, um, if you go to laramie.org, uh, backslash budget, and then I think Balancing Act or something, uh, but this tool is something that, um, we have now put live. Thank you. Build your own budget, and it's an opportunity for folks to look at, um, revenue expenses that, you know, how the money is being spent county, uh, county tax dollars, and offer some input, uh, in a very graphic way of, uh, if you, if you agree with the priorities that are currently in place, or if you would shift some of those priorities with the understanding that just like the state budget, the county budget has to be balanced. So that's a new tool, and we're hoping that that can help inform the commissioners, uh, as we deliberate on the 2021 budget. We're currently operating under the, uh, 2020 budget, and we're trying to make this process, um, a little bit more user-friendly, a little bit more interactive. When we have our budget hearings in, in November, uh, we typically don't get a very big turnout, and, and so we're trying to find ways to get people more engaged, to help inform us, you know, when we make decisions about the budget and how to spend the people's money. So be aware of that, please, and it, thanks to Michelle for posting the link for the, um, Budget Balancing Act. And Michelle, do you want to say a little bit more about the community survey and how do you access that? And when does it actually go live? I didn't see it, um, this morning.
Yeah, um, thank you. Are, we are going to have our community survey go live here in the next few weeks. Unfortunately, with the fires, we got behind a little bit on the schedule, but I think we're looking at the week of September. Bear with me just one second. I'm not sure what day it is today. So probably the weeks, sometime the week of September 20th, 21st is when we're going to go live. Um, I did just now include a link as well in the chat box that is where the community survey will be posted. Um, there'll also be options for folks if they don't want to take it online, which is totally okay. We'll also have an option where you can call me up and I can mail you one. Um, or there's actually an option to just take it over the phone as well. I don't have those details quite yet. We're not quite that far along, um, but those will be options as well, and I'm happy to answer your questions, um, about how you can do that. The survey will also be available in Spanish, um, so the link to the Spanish language version will be available on, on this site as well. And as Commissioner, oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
No, please finish what you were going to say.
I was just going to say, this, this is a survey, just a little background. We do this survey every two years. Um, it's primarily a satisfaction survey, so we, we really ask residents how satisfied they are with the services that Laramie County provides to them. But we also have some other, um, interesting questions in the survey about perceptions of our community, um, where you think we should be prioritizing, um, our efforts here in the next years. Um, so, well, I, I encourage you at all to, to participate, um, and my goal is to have a higher turnout than last year, or I'm sorry, two years ago. Um, I think we were somewhere in the fourth, now I'm really questioning myself. I'm going to look it up. Um, I thought we had about 4,000, but now I think I'm really underestimating myself. My goal is to be higher, um, and to have a broader range of demographics respond. Um, we tend to get, you know, typically, and this is true of every survey you ever see across the country, um, women respond to surveys more than men, particularly older, more educated, higher-earning white women tend to respond to surveys more than anybody else, and the same was true here in Laramie County. But our goals are to have a little bit of a broader outreach than we got last time. The survey is open to everyone. We're not just going to call certain people, um, and, and try to meet those demographic needs that way. We, we keep it open to everybody who wants to participate, but we're going to put some more effort into some outreach for those, those demographics that maybe don't typically respond or haven't responded in the past.
Thank, thank you, Michelle, and there is a question from Kylieya, uh, that's connected to the survey. Perhaps you could respond to that? And then Sharon had a question about the, um, the Gallagher Amendment ballot measure that, well, I, I think I can speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, that's a very good question, and actually, we hire, what we do, we don't actually, um, run the survey ourselves. We hire a, a contractor, a consultant that runs the survey, and yes, they have those auditory options for individuals with disabilities to participate that way as well. Yep, they, they have all of those options available for all of our residents. And then, Commissioner, did you want to answer the question about the budget?
Well, I, so the question from Sharon is, uh, speaking of the budget, what are your concerns about the Gallagher question on the ballot? Um, so the ballot that we will start to receive in the mail, uh, the week of October 12th, in addition to voting for, uh, president and everything else down the line, you know, folks running for public office, there will be, um, I believe it's 11, 11 statewide ballot measures. Some of them will be listed, uh, as propositions like 118, which means that they would be statutory changes to, um, changing state law. Some of them will be listed as amendments. The Gallagher Amendment, I think, is amendment, I can't remember now, but it'd be, it's listed as an amendment because it would, if it passes, and it's essentially repealing something called the Gallagher Amendment, but if it passes, it would make a change to the Colorado Constitution. This particular ballot measure was referred to the voters, uh, by the legislature in order to refer something to the voters that will be potentially a constitutional change. It has to have a two-thirds majority in both the House and the Senate down in Denver, and indeed, this did have bipartisan support. In a nutshell, it would, the Gallagher Amendment was established, I think, back in the, uh, the eighties, um, and the intent was to, uh, keep residential property taxes low, people's, uh, property taxes on their homes, and by and large, it's, it's achieved that. It said that in terms of the, the total amount of, uh, property taxes collected throughout the state, 64 counties, uh, no more than 45% of that, uh, can come from residential property taxes. So there's this 55, 45, um, ratio, and over the years, um, residential property has generally increased in value at a much higher rate than non-residential, uh, property like commercial, like vacant land, et cetera. And what that has, uh, caused to happen is an adjustment in what's called the residential assessment rate. When you get your property tax bill, it'll show you, you know, how the, um, the taxes are calculated, and there is this thing called a residential assessment rate. And currently, the resident, so you have an appraised value of your home, let's say it's worth $400,000, uh, then you, um, uh, you multiply that by the, um, uh, the residential assessment rate, and then right now it's 7.15%, uh, or is it, is that right? Yeah, 7.15%. And then that, that comes up with, um, your assessed value, and then that's multiplied by mill levies and that sort of thing, and that determines, uh, how much property taxes you pay. The Gallagher Amendment, um, in next year, uh, because of the projected appreciation of, of, uh, residential properties, un, unless it's changed, unless this thing passes, the implications for the county are that next year, when we do the reassessment, the reappraisal of, of people's properties, that's done every two years, we will likely have to use a residential assessment rate of 5.88% rather than 7.15%. And, and what that means, and also given that, um, uh, you know, commercial property and, and other kinds of, uh, property will, will, uh, not appreciate as much, it means that, um, uh, in 2022, the implications for the county are that we could take a 14 million plus hit on the county budget. Uh, most of our revenue, general, well, our general fund revenue comes from property taxes. Our sales tax revenue, .810% is what we call dedicated, uh, for dedicated purposes, like open space, like the behavioral health, like the operation of the ranch, um, and, and some cat, and capital improvements, like the operation of the jail. So that's, that's what Sharon, that's, it's a long-winded answer, but, um, again, the Blue Book, and that's where some of the controversy, uh, recently has occurred. Uh, there was, um, some kind of a lawsuit, uh, put forth to suggest that the changes in the language in the Book, Blue Book, uh, were, um, uh, one group did not support those changes, suggesting it's not giving the full implications of the impacts on property taxes. So you have people who want to repeal the Gallagher Amendment, uh, because it's a fiscal, it has fiscal implications in the Colorado Constitution, and then you want, you have groups that want to keep it, uh, and, and, uh, there clearly are benefits to, um, uh, homeowners in terms of their property tax bills, but it does have a disproportionate impact on businesses in terms of their real property taxes that they pay on their, on their buildings and their, their stores, and then, of course, they also generally have to pay personal property taxes. So that's the, those are the implications. If, um, if this thing passes in November, then it means that the, um, the, the residential assessment rate will likely stay at that 7.15%, because I think they also passed a bill and the legislature said to freeze it for a couple of years, but it would allow for more flexibility regarding, you know, how property taxes are collected. If this thing doesn't pass, um, and I would submit to you that it's probably going to be a heavy lift, uh, I, I don't know exactly the campaigns for and against how extensive they are, but if it does not pass, if it fails, uh, and it's a constitutional change, so I think it requires at least 55% of, um, voter approval of, uh, I believe that's correct. If it does not pass, then it means that the residential assessment rate will have to be reduced next year, and then that will impact the, um, by at least $14 million or so in 2022, the money that the county has to provide services. Sorry for the long-winded answer.
Very thorough answer, Commissioner, um, for a very complicated problem, right?
Yeah, and, yeah, and, and I would, um, encourage folks, I, I know that the, um, you know, in Laramie County, the, the Laramie County League of Women Voters, they're, uh, they're starting up with their, um, uh, candidate, well, I know they've got some scheduled candidate forums, and I would presume that they're creating their little booklet that attempts to provide in, in more, in simpler language, you know, the ballot measures, um, and, and statewide ballot measures, and, uh, uh, you know, any, any local ballot measures. One last thing I'll say, so, so I'd, I'd ask folks to look for that in addition to the Blue Book, but I do know in the, um, a couple of months ago, or back in August, I guess that was a couple of months ago, um, there was discussion amongst the commissioners about whether we would refer a county ballot measure that would allow us to, um, quote, "float the mill levy." In other words, uh, give the, um, the, the, the county the ability to, uh, adjust the mill levy if indeed, um, the Gallagher Amendment is still in place, and if indeed, the residential assessment rate would be dropped to 5.88%. We decided not to do that for a variety of reasons, and I think, uh, even though the county will, you know, will have to really tighten our belts even more, um, I think that was the right decision. There, there's a lot of, there's a lot of noise out there these days, and there's a lot of stuff on the ballot, and, and we want to make sure that, um, we don't want to complicate things with one, you know, with one, one additional thing.
Sharon did say thank you for the answer, Commissioner, so much appreciated.
And, and I appreciate you participating, Sharon, and, um, you know, Sharon is one of the members of our Aging Advisory Council Office on Aging, and has, uh, has been a strong participant over the years, and I think Beth is, if she's still on, that she's my wife, so I, that's awfully nice of her to support our efforts. And then, of course, Kylieya. I, it looks like, um, it's now 9:36. We actually, um, went pretty well. I, I hope, I don't know if there are any other questions, but if not, we'll, um, we'll end the meeting early, and we'll, um, we'll look at next month and see what makes sense. Uh, I think we do have one scheduled for the Wellington Community, Wellington, Waverly, Buckeye Communities, October 1, and we'll probably bring Angela back for that, but I will respectfully ask her to be briefer, because we, uh, will have, um, folks from the Solid Waste Department, uh, giving an update on our efforts around, um, the new landfill north of Wellington, and then issues related to the, uh, transfer station and the composting facility, and the closure of the current landfill in the next couple of years. So that's the Wellington meeting, but, um, you know, watch for all of that. And a thank you to Michelle, who is such a, again, a very, uh, incompetent and, and wonderful person to help with these things, and, and thanks to the folks who participated, and we'll continue to try to get the word out.
Yep, and I hope everyone enjoys their weekend.
Oh, yes, that's right. Enjoy the weekend. Good idea, good idea, Michelle. Take care, everyone.
Bye-bye.